We're able for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So I believe now it's oath of office. Councilmember Shippers and King.
Raise your right hand, please. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter, the Normative Decisions of the City of Cadillac, and will faithfully perform the duties of the office of City Councilmember according to the best of my ability.
I do. I will.
I will.
Same thing.
Yeah.
I ask Sandy if it was okay to say, "Yeah," you betcha.
It works.
We're not far enough north.
Right, right. Next, can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Shippers.
Present.
Councilmember Alambas.
Here.
Ingalls. King.
Here.
Mayor Falcons.
Okay, now we go to the approval of agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to make that motion?
I'd make a motion, a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Alambas.
Yes.
Ingalls. King.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Okay, now it's time for public comments. If you have any public comments that you would like to make, please come up, give us your name, and write down your information, and keep it down to three minutes, if you would be so kind. Seeing no one, I'll move on to the next thing, which is the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of, let's see, minutes from the regular meeting of December 20th, 2021.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls. King.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Shippers.
Yes.
Councilmember Alambas.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Okay, it looks like next we have a community spotlight.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Shippers and members of City Council. I'd like to introduce Sergeant Bertram this evening to take the podium, and he is going to talk about the Shop With A Cop program and recognize our special guests. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, City Council. I appreciate your time. I know it's valuable, so I won't try to waste it too much. I was asked to kind of give a brief synopsis of the event. Once again, my, my name is Nick Bertram. I'm a sergeant with the Police Department. I've been here 14 years. So we started this program in 2017, and our goal was to kind of help establish a good relationship between our police department and our school, elementary school-aged children. So we started by having the schools pick out students that they, they deemed would be, I don't want to say worthy, but they would be a good candidate for shopping with us. So the Police Department didn't pick those parameters. I had the schools do that for us. They picked some kids, and then we would, as the Police Department would take the kids shopping, we would go to Meyer. They would pick out presents for both their families, their siblings, grandma's, grandpa's, whoever they wanted to pick presents out for. And then we would come around from the back end and then buy those kids some gifts as well, out of some of our money that we've, we've raised, so. And then after that, we've arranged to take the kids for meals to various locations. This past year, 2021, we took the kids to the Armory, Chartwell Schools. The, they, they set up food for us. They provided a buffet for us to have. And then I have a couple groups that I wanted to recognize today because they've been with me since basically the beginning. Meyer notwithstanding, the manager of Meyer is on his way here, so I'll start with the DAV, Michigan DAV. This is Disabled American Veterans. These guys have been with me since, I think it's actually the second year, but, so the first year, we went off with the process that I described, and then I came to them and I said, "Hey, I want to do something bigger." And they actually contributed towards renting a charter bus for us to take the kids in. So we got to take them in a really nice bus, got to play them like The Grinch on the TVs when, when they were done shopping. So the kids had a really good time. And since then, I've had a great partnership with them. These guys are awesome. They, they come and show up, no questions asked. They wrap all the presents that we bring in after shopping while the kids and I are eating the meals, wherever those are. So I'm very grateful for their, their time and their efforts to, to help me with that. And they even contributed last year. So last year in 2020, we, we didn't do things the way we normally did. Just me and my family went and bought the presents for the kids. The veterans still helped wrap everything, though, and then we got those delivered. So we haven't missed a beat in five years, so I'm very happy for that. So with that said, I have a certificate here that I made up for them.
And Nick, just to interrupt for a quick second.
Sure.
If it's okay with council, when the Meyer manager comes, perhaps we could pause where we're at and go back and recognize that individual.
Absolutely.
Okay. So this is the certificate I made for you guys. Jim, if you want to come up, or? This is Jim. He's the commander. Is that not the commander of the DAV for, for this area? So nice certificate for you with our patch and yours as well, so I just want to thank you very much for your, your service and your.
My pleasure.
Your company. So, yeah, and then once Brandon gets here, I'll give the rundown of what Meyer's done. So would you like me to sit down then?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. What a great program. That's wonderful. All right, so next, we need to appoint City Councilmembers to the Board of Review. And Marcus, you say that, that, Robert?
I have not spoken with Councilmember Ingalls, but I would assume, and that's a big thing to say, we could probably keep things status quo.
I'll, I'll go out on a limb and make a motion, Mayor Pro Tem, to request that we appoint Robert Ingalls as the regular member and, I believe, D.I. Shippers as the alternate member of the Board of Review for a one-year term to expire February 7th, 2023.
I'll second.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Shippers.
Yes.
Councilmember Alambas.
Yes.
Ingalls. Mayor Falcons.
Okay. Next, we have some appointments to the Planning Commission, a reappointment of John Putvin to a three-year term on the Planning Commission. You usually say that, don't you, Sandy?
You're doing fine, though.
Yes.
I'm kind of new at this.
It's okay.
I would make a motion to approve the reappointment of John Putvin Jr. to the Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on February 7th, 2025.
Support.
He's been on for 24 years so far. And he does a great job, so I want to be sure to thank him for that.
Mayor Pro Tem Shippers.
Yes.
Councilmember Alambas.
Yes.
Ingalls. King.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
It's being recommended to approve the reappointment of Sherri Alt to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire on February 7th, 2025.
I'd make a motion to approve the reappointment of Sherri Alt to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire on February 7th, 2025.
Support.
Councilmember Alambas.
Yes.
Ingalls. King.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
And Sherri's been on that board for 18 years, so thank her as well.
It's also being recommended to approve the reappointment of Louis Nichols to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire on February 7th, 2025.
I'd make a motion, request a motion to approve the reappointment of Louis Nichols to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire on February 7th, 2025.
Support.
And he's been on that commission for 30 years.
Oh, my goodness.
That's dedication. We've got some wonderful volunteers in this community. Thank you.
Looks like our special guest may have just come.
Do the roll call on this, Marcus?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ingalls. King.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Shippers.
Yes.
Councilmember Alambas.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
All right, back again, thank you, guys. To add on Meyer's contribution, so they've been with us doing this as well since the beginning, and they have donated by my math at least $10,000 in the last five years to the program. So it's gotten to the point where they're actually just calling me and saying, "You ready for it? Just come and sign, and we'll, we'll give it to you again." So they're very gracious. They've been a very good host. Brandon Sutton is the manager here, so he has always set up registers for us, specifically for us. So we have everything very accommodating for us to get through the whole program, and they've done an excellent job. So I just want to thank Brandon and Meyer for, for their partnership with us, and I have a certificate for you as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Get back to the kids. It is seeing their sma, their faces and stuff when they're out shopping and looking for gifts for their parents, so it's a nice, nice thing to be able to give back to the community and watch those kids who may not be so fortunate be able to give back to their parents, their siblings. So thank you for your, your partnership also. Thank you for your time, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You guys want to just turn this way real quick?
Yep.
I think that'd be a good thing to have on as a picture. And then I'll get one of the others as well.
Yep.
You go with Jim, too?
Yep, and then Jim maybe, too.
Yeah, go ahead.
Probably all three of you, if that would be, if that would be okay. We're going to do them separate, but together it probably is great.
Here, I'll let you guys do your separate one.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a copy of that sometime?
Yeah, yep, I'll coordinate with Nick. Yep, for sure.
Okay, so that takes us to the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Shippers and members of the City Council. A few items on our report this evening. The first one is with respect to the Residential Facade Grant Program. As members of council likely recall, the city was a fortunate grant recipient of the Consumers Energy Foundation Neighborhood Revitalization Grant to the tune of a quarter million dollars. As a part of that grant program, $20,000 was allocated as part of the submission to create a local matching facade grant program for folks to be able to use that are in need to fix up essentially the facades of their, of their residential properties. Turns out that, just as a matter of coincidence, Consumers and Habitat already have a very good relationship with a program that is essentially identical, minus the matching grant piece, to what we're looking for. And we were able to work out essentially the terms of an agreement with Habitat for Humanity to facilitate on behalf of the City of Cadillac, the portion of the grant that we have, specific to the facade program, you know, again, portion of the overall quarter of a million that we got. This portion of it would go through Habitat for Humanity. It would still be allocated specific to City of Cadillac homes and specific to the terms that we have come up with that Consumers was, was, was in agreement for, but it would actually be facilitated and hosted through Habitat. And so the recommendation this evening would be to ask City Council essentially to approve the partnership with the Wexford Osceola Habitat for Humanity to co-manage this residential facade grant program that we have.
I think that's a fabulous idea.
And, you know, we're hopeful that over time, maybe we'll get more donations and be able to keep, keep the project going beyond, you know, the 20,000 that we'll have for it, so.
That would be great.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the city's partnership with Wexford Osceola Habitat for Humanity to co-manage the Residential Facade Grant Program portion of the Consumers Energy Grant.
I'll second that.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Shippers.
Yes.
Councilmember Alambas.
Yes.
Ingalls. Mayor Falcons.
Okay. Thank you. The next couple of items are, are somewhat symbols, similar as the regarding roof maintenance and replacement matters. The first one is with respect to the roof here at Cadillac City Hall. Maintenance or major maintenance to the roof hasn't been done in 30 years, and, you know, the roof has pretty much held up and has been in good shape, but we're at a point in time where, where we need some major work done to it, otherwise we'll, we'll quickly lose integrity to this overall complex. And the building was built, and Owen, I don't know the exact year, but it was early '70s, I think?
Mid-'70s.
Mid-'70s, yeah. So, you know, it's about 45, you know, edging on 50 years old. So it's time to, time to put in the necessary maintenance to the work. I am likely going to, to butcher the, the name of the contractor, but I'll try. Cacollin? Okay, so the recommendation is to, is to Cacollin Roofing out of Cacollin, Michigan, which would also include the alternate number three roof scan in an amount of $140,500. The city did have DK design on both this project and the next one that I'll be talking about, actually analyze as well what's going on. So it was more than us just taking this out for bid. You know, we went out and had, you know, folks with structural engineering expertise, you know, tell us whether or not, you know, it's even worth fixing or whether or not it's, it's better off fully replacing. And so the recommendation this evening is to, is to award it to Cacollin after competitive, competitive bids were received. If you have any questions, myself or Owen, probably Owen on this one.
Owen, you've been here the longest, so look, so I'll look at you.
Yes.
Who did the original roof?
I do not know.
Woxon.
I do not, okay.
Woxon. So that's probably why.
I failed your test, then.
I am older than you. So that's why you didn't contact them about repairs?
Well, they, they were certainly invited to bid and, and just didn't.
Okay.
So I know DK reached out to their network of roofing contractors, and so they did not submit a bid. So sometimes, you know, we have some of these crews that are just too busy, concerned about supply chain and things like that.
Once again, you've given me the correct answer.
Good, okay.
All right, thank you. I would make, with that, I'd make a motion to award the contract for roof maintenance at the Cadillac Municipal Complex to Cacollin Roofing Company, including the cost of alternate three for a total contract amount of $140,500.
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Shippers.
Yes.
Councilmember Alambas.
Yes.
Ingalls. King.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Next item is for another city facility. This is the facility that we own at 120 West Chapin Street that is currently occupied by the State of Michigan, and it's, you know, through the, the proceeds of the, the lease revenues that we take in, that we then use to maintain, you know, the operations of that building. Similar situation where it's been about three decades. The roof needs to be replaced in this, in this manner. DK did not recommend a simple, you know, refurbishment or, or maintenance to it like what was recommended for City Hall. Competitive bids were solicited. We received two with the recommendation going to Cole Incorporated. The total contract amount, including the Winter Guard Alternates and the Five Star Warranty and the, the windroof sheathing, is $149,324, plus the cost of any required additional sheathing at $5 a square foot. And as I mentioned, funds are available in the Building Authority Operating Fund. That's the fund that manages that facility.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to award the contract for the replacement of the roof at 120 West Chapin Street to Cole Incorporated, including the costs of alternate one through three for a total contract amount of $149,324, plus the cost of any required sheathing at the unit replacement cost of $5 per square foot.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Alambas.
Yes.
Ingalls. King.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Thank you. The next item is a recommendation regarding replacement of radios. These are not police or fire or public safety-related radios, but rather, these are radios that are used by the Public Works and Utility Departments, so that's all of the city operations that we have outside of police and fire that are what we would consider our field operations. The bids were solicited. We received five bids. Recommendation is to go with Grand Traverse Mobile Communications, which is also the same company that manages the Wexford County radio system. There's good rapport with that, with that company and knowledge of the area. The bid amount as being recommended would be for $40,563.79. That includes the desired equipment for the project implementation. Owen, does that also includes the, include the 5% contingency?
Yes.
And the 5% contingency for, for the contract, which we might need another radio here or there.
Yeah, and that's, again, that's only for additions. It would still be at their, the bid price per individual radio. The only additions would be if we said, "Hey, we'd like to mount one in this vehicle," as we've thought through it, so.
Funds are available in our Water and Sewer Fund as well as our Stores and Garage Fund.
I'd make, I would make a motion to award the radio replacement project to Grand Traverse Mobile Communications in accordance with their bid and to approve a 5% contingency should the city determine that additional equipment is desired as the project is implemented in a total awarded price of $40,563.79.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls. King.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Shippers.
Yes.
Councilmember Alambas.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Shippers and members of the City Council. Moving right along, the next item is a recommendation regarding the city's industrial monitoring program. This is the industrial pretreatment monitoring program that we have to have in accordance with state law. The state also has put in a slew of updates that the city is required to become compliant with, and that being said, is now going to, call them unfunded mandates, cause us to move forward with an engineering firm to help us get to, get to that level. We received one bid. Fleiss and Vanderbrink, we're also very familiar with Fleiss and Vanderbrink. They've done a lot of work for the city in the past. The bid came in at $32,000. You will ultimately see components of their work back to City Council for public hearings. As you'll notice in the communication, it requires updates to our city code, so this is not unfortunately a one-stop-shop moment, and I do apologize, but it's just part of the process in order for us to then have those necessary code revisions come back. So if there's any detailed questions you have about industrial pretreatment, our utilities director is here, and I'm sure would be happy to.
How many bids did we get? Did we get any? One. One person was interested. Okay.
I imagine it's not something a lot of people. Are there a lot of companies that do this?
No.
But updates are. There's a few, but, you know, updates are rare and, you know, not that often, so for us, it's something that the state looked at. Our programs said they want to update it. We've never had a problem with our industries, so they wanted to update it, so.
There you go.
We're going to update it.
Better safe than sorry, right?
Right.
Correct.
Ultimately, it might require tighter restrictions, so.
I'd make a motion to award the contract for updating the industrial monitoring program to Fleiss and Vanderbrink in the amount of $32,000.
Support.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Shippers.
Yes.
Councilmember Alambas.
Yes.
Ingalls. Mayor Falcons.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Shippers and members of council. The next item is a recommendation regarding the purchase of work trucks, and if members of council can require, or did I skip one? No.
No, you're good.
If members of council can recall conversations at least twice over the last arguably six months or so, when we came back to council twice, one originally to buy some police cars, and then after not a very good track record, the first time out, we ordered an additional car or two just to try to get it on the timing. We're finding that, you know, access and, and ability to vehicles is very, very difficult. We put, put it out for bid, received one bid back with results saying that it was going to be until perhaps December of 2022 at the earliest before we can receive the six work trucks that we are looking at, at getting, which is really difficult for us to, to wait nearly a whole year yet. And that still might be a problem, at least for half of the, the number of trucks that we're looking for. As you'll see in the communication this evening, it references that we are looking for six, but we only have access right now to three. And the three that we found are actually split between two different dealerships, neither of which was the dealer that, that bid on it. We didn't like the pricing, and we didn't like the units that were bid on, nor did we like the timing. We did pick up the phone and contact a couple of dealerships that actually work with the state My Deal program, which is essentially the state bid list, and found units that will closely match what we're looking for. And that's the recommendation this evening, to work with LaFontaine Chevrolet and Todd Wenzel GMC accordingly. And you can see in the communication what we're looking at getting authorization for this, this evening. We'll still need to come back to City Council for the other three units, frankly, once we can, we can get a, a lead on them with, with pricing that we believe would be suitable. But right now, we just don't, we just don't have it. And so the recommendation this evening would be to actually reject the, the bid that we did receive, and Owen, I don't recall what dealer that was even from.
Yeah, it was from Feldman Ford, which is not a, not a My Deal vendor. And I'll just add, in conversations with these My Deal vendors, the trucks were very close to matching our specs and were at least as good as what we needed, but didn't exactly match, which is why they weren't, they didn't really submit a bid. So for example, one of the trucks, we wanted red, but they have one on the lot that's white, but it's 13, it's $11,400 cheaper than the one that was bid, and it's available immediately. So white is, in that case, is very acceptable.
Love white.
Yes. Yes, exactly. The, the other truck that we're going to actually be back for a service body for was a savings of $10,700 on that truck. Didn't exactly match the specs, but it, it, it met or exceeded in the important areas and will be a very, very strong vehicle for our, for our service fleet. So in calling around, that was kind of why we didn't get a slew of bids, because they weren't sure exactly of that timing, and something like this one on the lot that we found, somebody could have bought that, you know, at any time, but we kind of put our, put our sticker on it and made an informal commitment with them acknowledging that, that council would have to act on it tonight. So tried to do that kind of on the fly, and I think we saved, saved a pretty decent amount of money, and we'll get them a lot quicker, so.
And it may also be testament, testament to how vehicles are purchased down the road, where instead of manufacturers just having a sort of a plethora of different, you know, shapes, styles, colors, and models that the My Deal dealers will have access to, it's almost like build the suit type of thing, or.
Right.
You're going to find what you're going to find, and that's kind of where we're at. So funds are available in the two different budgets, again, the Stores and Garage Fund and the Water and Sewer Fund.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to reject the bid for work trucks and award the purchase to the My Deal dealers in accordance with the information presented.
I'll second that.
Mayor Pro Tem Shippers.
Yes.
Councilmember Alambas.
Yes.
Ingalls. King.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Okay, that takes us to adoption of ordinances and resolutions.
Yes, thank you. We do have one this evening. It's a request to consider the adoption of a Michigan Department of Transportation Performance Resolution for municipalities. As you'll see in your packet, right in the beginning of the resolution, it simply states how this is required by the Michigan Department of Transportation for purposes of issuing to a municipality an individual permit for use of state highway right-of-way and/or an annual application and permit for miscellaneous operations within state highway right-of-way. And as we all know, Cadillac does have. And as we all know, Cadillac does have several areas where it's all state highway right-of-way, uh, that we are in and out of on a somewhat frequent basis. So the recommendation tonight would be to approve the resolution accordingly.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt the MDA performance resolution for municipalities as presented.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Alambas?
Yes.
Ingles. King?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Okay. That takes us, I believe, to public comments. If you have a public comment, please come to the podium, state your name and leave your information on the paper there, if there's one. Um, and keep your comments to three minutes, if you would be so kind.
I'm Glenn Kangus of 2420 North Boulevard, Cadillac, Michigan. I just want to submit my two assessments to the city council and the Cadillac of, uh, of Michigan. Uh, the first one being of 112022. The second one being of 2322. The, uh, the assessments are in connection with what's going on in our country. And Cadillac is involved in it. And I just want the people of Cadillac and the city council to know what's going on. And here's two copies of it. Thank you.
Seeing nobody else, we can go to good of the order. Is there anybody here, anything for good of the order?
Of course. But you first.
I don't.
You don't have anything?
I don't.
Stop it. Really?
No.
Okay.
With, uh, the shop with the cop, good program. Thank you, Jim. With the DAV, you're also part of the honor guard. And not a lot of people know what the honor guard does. It's when a veteran is interred, buried, that they show up, play taps, 21-gun salute. And being the ex-person at the cemetery, I saw them in action a great deal and received many compliments on the job you do up there. And people from large cities, Lansing, Grand Rapids, would, would comment every time how much better the job you did than they did even in the big cities. It really is a wonderful thing. You do a great job. Thank you. And I think we just spent $362,000 on infrastructure. So I, I always have a hard time when people say, we're doing well with our city. We've, we've got money there and why don't we spend it? Well, $362,000 today. Frugal. Owen's frugal. Thank you, Owen.
It'd be worse.
Thank you. So that's why. I just, you know, you never know when things, things pop up and we're doing well on the budget and thank everybody involved with that. That's it?
Um, it's nice to see everybody. I'm glad I got through this. Thank you for all of your help.
You did great.
And, um, it's nice to see you, Mike. Glad you're doing better. All right. With that, I will adjourn this meeting.
Okay.
I'll email everyone what we received.